We got upgraded to a little bigger water, okay.
Yeah, right on time.
We are on, we'll let the city attorney pass in front of the camera. Good morning, good evening. We've had a meeting at 7:45 this morning, and this is our second one. Mr. Charmley, what'd you call it? The bookends? Yeah. He's making our day. Getting the most out of our day. It is just after 7 o'clock, and with that, I'm going to call the Cadillac City Council meeting for July 15, 2013 to order. I'll do that at this time, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Thank you very much.
That would have been more likely.
Yes. You have to plan your wipeouts before the meeting starts. Marcus, who would I go for the roll call at this point?
That would be me. I am going to be filling in until we have a new clerk ready to roll, so I'll be doing the minutes and the roll call and other procedural items accordingly.
Okay. Roll call, please, Marcus.
Thank you. Councilmember Melama.
Here.
Shippers.
Here.
Spelman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Burnett.
Here.
Thank you, all here and accounted for. First up is the approval of the agenda. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I do have something to add for council to begin this evening.
Okay, absolutely.
We received a request from the downtown Cadillac Association for a made-in-Michigan Thursday special event, requires a public parking lot closure.
Okay.
I would suggest that we add this item, if council agrees, to City Manager's report, item D.
Item D?
Yes, sir.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment as presented by Marcus Petya. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion about the agenda or the agenda as amended? Hearing none. Mr. Petya, could you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, our public comments. It is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. We do have a public comment at the end, and our meeting is, it looks like on paper, shorter tonight, but if anyone would like to come up and introduce themselves, or just come up and say anything, feel free. And we have a special guest, I should point out.
Hi.
Long-standing Elaine Richardson.
My name's Elaine Richardson, and I'm here to make everybody aware that we are celebrating 100 years at the courthouse, and we've been doing some sprucing up, fixing up of the place to try and make it nice, and we're having an open house on the 27th. I've passed out brochures to all of you, from 10 to 2. Some of the things that we have been working on is some landscaping out in front. We've had a lot of community involvement with this. We've had some donations from some people that have helped us out. All those donations are listed on the back. We're also going to have cookies and juice to pass out. We're going to have a slideshow by Top Schogren, and the footlighters, some footlighters. People are going to be dressed in period attire and roaming around the courthouse on the grounds and inside. We're going to have Abrams carriage that will take people from the courthouse to the museum and back again. The museum will also be open and sharing in this with us. Cadillac Transit Authority is also going to be involved in this, and they're going to have their trolley car that will pick people up downtown or at the two Harborview and Kirtland Terrace and bring them up, so they can see. We're having local musicians, some children or kids from the high school will be playing, and also the Northern Winds Quartet will be playing. If it's nice, we'll have them outside. If it's not, we'll have them inside. We're going to also have antique cars that are going to be parked along the front of the courthouse, as well as in the back of the courthouse, that will be timed period-appropriate. And we'd like to see you all be there, and we're pretty excited about this. We put a lot of time and effort. If anybody gets an opportunity between now and then to look at the front of the courthouse, we've done a lot of landscaping. Jill from MSU Extension and also Linda Much kind of put our drawings together, and we got the plants, put them in, and it looks very nice. We cleared some old shrubs out and put these new ones in, so it looks very nice. So, please, I've got some brochures. If it's okay, I'd like to leave some of those along with a poster. I'd like to leave, and maybe you could post them up for us, and if you've got any questions.
No, we don't, but thank you so much for doing this and bringing it to our attention. I think you'd probably leave them with Mr. Deetwen over there. We'll make sure we get them on our front desk and get the poster up.
Thank you so much.
That's our secondary clerk tonight. Thank you, Jeff. And that's Saturday, July 27, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., a week from this Saturday, for the 100-year anniversary. Thanks for doing that, Elaine, and good to see you.
I should also mention, we've been working with Jeff, and we've also been working with Bruce Dewett, trying to get our road kind of cleaned up, and he's gotten some exits in the courthouse taken care of, so we can close off the other half, so that would be... They've been very helpful, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, public comment is open. It is requested comment time be limited to three minutes. Please feel free to come forward if you'd like. And seeing no one else come forward, I'll close that. Go to the consent agenda. We do have two items on the consent agenda, our city council minutes from a special meeting and regular meeting, both from July 1. And who would like to make a motion relative to our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
There is a motion and support. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Petya, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried. No proclamations, no public hearings tonight, no communications, no appointments. We are down to the Cadillac City Manager's report. Mr. Petya, looks like we have some items for tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This first item is regarding the park in East Division Street Alley Improvement Project. As requested, there is in your packet some maps and charts that do show the proposed special assessment role for the alleyway improvements that have been requested this evening. What the city council is being asked to do is to approve Resolution Number Two and Resolution Number Three. Following that approval, we will be sending out the individual, assuming that it's approved, of course, we would be sending out the individual letters to all of the residents that are involved. I believe there might be five. Bruce, is that right? Five addresses, but I don't think it's five different property owners.
One person owns two of them.
Yeah, one person does own two. Advising of what their individual special assessment allotment would be accordingly. We, at this point, haven't received any comments or feedback. Bruce, have you, do you have anything you want to add about the condition of the road?
Condition right now is basically sand and maybe a little bit of gravel there. Washes out a lot. Gets a lot of complaints from the neighbors. And so, I think the majority of the people that are on the assessment role have signed the petition. Couple of them are, at least one of them's from out of town, so that was difficult for them, but we do have a majority signing petition.
The total cost of the project is $11,000, which would be spread out over a period of 10 years as part of the assessment. I'm not sure if there's anything more you wanted to add to it at this point?
Nope. We will, when we send it out, we'll give them a lot of information, how they can appeal it, if they can't be here, a written letter, a lot of information of that magnitude, that if they can't make it, how they can protest it or support it.
And so, again, we would also be setting the public hearing for August 5 of 2013 as a part of it. So, the motion being asked for this evening would be to approve the City Manager's report in the special assessment role and to set a public hearing for August 5, 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, that motion is made. Everybody understand it? And if so, who's supporting?
Support.
There is support. Any discussion?
They're referencing Resolution Two and Three. Were those just not included in our packet, or is that... Are we using resolution in a different word than normal?
Bruce, is that attachment one and two? That was the language you had put into the communication.
There's... I didn't know if we got a resolution from Mike or not.
Because there is no resolution in the packet, and the action that we are being asked is simply the approval of the report and the role itself. That's a good question, councilmember.
I don't know what you're referring to.
If the, look at the packet.
The agenda packet.
For this item, it indicates in the middle paragraph, Resolution Number Two and Resolution Number Three.
Oh, okay.
And usually, we have a, that resolutions... I was just wondering if it was not included. Normally, that resolution's the specific verbiage.
It's not the city clerk's job.
Yeah, it would have been councilmember, mayor, members of council. If we had a resolution, it would have been in the packet, or I would have advised that we don't, that we don't have one for this evening. And so, it could simply be a miscommunication between Bruce and Chris in putting together the council communication piece. Mike is double-checking right now to see if we need one, though.
It was just sounding like maybe one of those resolutions actually stated when the public hearing was, but maybe not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that Two and Three is correct. I think that you have to start off with the Resolution Number One, which is to proceed... It's a resolution of intent to proceed to form the Special Assessment District. And we have not been...
You don't have it?
We drafted it, no.
Okay. So, is this...
Should we hold this, then?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The initial resolution has to tentatively determine to proceed with the public improvement and determine the necessity, set the nature, tentatively designate the limits of the Special Assessment District. All of that can be done in short order, but it wasn't done for this meeting.
Good catch there, councilmember.
Yeah, good catch. Bruce, if you can work with the city attorney in getting that resolution between now and the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Resolution wasn't adopted last meeting.
No, because the last meeting was refer it to the city manager for a report and recommendation. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I rescind my question.
Hang on, maybe not, hang on. So, what's the action from council based on what we've talked about here? Does councilmember Shippers need to rescind her motion and the support from councilmember Melama?
The recommendation would be to table it until we have the resolution.
Okay.
So, I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my support.
And I make a motion to table this item until such time as it can be down appropriately.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Petya, could we have a roll call?
Yes.
What are we voting on?
Table.
Table.
Until they can...
Until we have the resolution for you to approve.
Would that be the next meeting? Tableting technically means the next meeting, but...
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Marcus, could you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried.
Maybe, I don't know if there's anybody from the public for that, but would that, then, would the public hearing still take place on the 5th, or would we be...
No, I'm sorry to interrupt you. No, we would still need to set the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't said anything, so... Sorry, councilmember.
So, I just, I didn't mean to stop the project, other than the...
No, good catch. I didn't realize it wasn't there. Okay. One moment, Mr. Mayor, members of council, they just catch up on my notes. Okay.
Let me ask another question about it.
Sure.
I noticed that Lexington County is down as one of the property owners. Would they pay taxes on this? They don't pay taxes, but would they would pay the assessment?
They would.
I think they are the owner, so they would pay, but it could be... Apparently, they do pay the assessment, for sure. I'm not sure about taxes. But they must own a few... Well, it is, it looks like one. 194-foot excess.
They own the house 206 East Division.
Tax default.
What's that?
As a tax defaulted property.
There's a renter in there.
Well, maybe they're renting to them. That would be unusual. Well, that might be a question to check with the county before we come back and get Sherry's answer, if you could, Mr. Petya.
Will do. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm ready to proceed.
Okay. Why don't you go with B?
Okay. This next item is a recommendation with respect to the vehicle transceiver unit, or VxU replacement. There is rather detailed communication in the council packet with respect to the census, that's the brand name metering equipment. Jeff is here this evening to talk about that, should there be some questions. It essentially turns out that the equipment that we're using currently, which previously, by the way, was provided at no charge, is now functionally obsolete. We are still able to use it. It's still functioning. We're not looking at replacing it. That would be a significant investment for us to do, but we do need to obtain some additional peripheral equipment to keep it going and to keep it functional, and that is still available. We did learn that there's a sole source provider. In fact, the manufacturer of the equipment actually submitted a letter to us advising that, which I did include in your packet as well, since the recommendation this evening would be to waive bidding first, waive competitive bidding first, and then to award the purchase of the one-vehicle transceiver unit and two handheld units to Aetna Supply of Grand Rapids, Michigan for $65,000. And Jeff, please feel free to fill in some of the gaps. This is some pretty technical equipment that utilities uses, and want to make sure council understands what it is that we're acquiring.
The VxU is actually the device that we use when we do our meter readings. Before we had radio read meters, we'd have to hand-read every meter in the city for water consumption to get our monthly bills out. And when we went to the census meter, they had the application of doing a radio read, which took us from having three days of, or five days of three guys walking around the city every day, to one day, we can read the whole city from our vehicle, from a vehicle. They provided us the unit to read it in 2004. I think it was in about 2008, they said, "Well, we're not going to support this anymore. When it breaks, you're done, and you're going to have to get a new unit if we don't have the parts on hand." Well, we rolled the dice, and it's five years later, and we're asking to replace that unit because it's really going to be hard to get parts when it goes bad. When it does go down, they indicated to us it could be three to four months before we could get another unit at that point. And so, if it's three or four months of not getting utility bills out because we cannot get the data off the readers... Now, we could go with a different brand, but then we'd have to go and get all the census meters throughout the whole city. We'd have to go through and replace every meter in everybody's house, and that's $120 a meter, and, you know, obviously, when we looked into this, we went with the census, and that's the, the VxU is the device that reads it. And with that, there is the only, the one sole source that is given the licensing to sell anyplace in the Michigan. I think that letter says, except the Western U.P., they don't have. So, if we're going to buy it, we have to buy it through them. We can't go to another state and ask them to sell it to us. We have to buy it through the Aetna because of the agreements they have, so...
When does it... How long does it take to pay for it, so?
Well, the first read will have, you know, we'll collect more money than the unit's worth, the first read, that we go out around the city, you know? We collect roughly about $4 million a year on water usage and sewer usage, so...
Yeah, I guess I was trying to compare, you know, if we had to pay four or five people five days, or whatever it was.
We wouldn't have the equipment to do it, no. I mean, before, outside the house, there was an actual meter that would actually give you a readout, and so you could go from the previous month to this month. Now, it's all, it's all digital. The meter will keep recording it every month, but you need the electronic... Unless the people will let you in the house to look in their house, you need the actual devices to get them out. And we do have two handheld units right now, but like I said, before, it was three or four guys going around the whole city, so now, with two handheld devices, it'd be a longer, you know, it'd probably be, you know, more like two weeks for the two guys to do it, the whole city, so... And then you get into the whole billing cycle, you know, because you got to wait to get all the bills in before you can run the bills, and so then we'd be pushing the billing cycle out farther, so... I would say probably, though, realistically, answering what your question is, is probably in a year, year and a half, we'll have that unit paid off.
How often do you do this, Jeff?
Once a month.
Every month?
Every month, we read and send out bills to every customer in Cadillac.
No, they were all read every month?
Every, every meter's read every month. So, you know, the townships, they're on a three-month program where they read their meters every three months, so... But we're, we're every month.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions? I guess I have a question. Is this tied in at all to the billing software I was talking to you about earlier in the week, Mr. Petya, related to paying your water bills online?
I don't know. I do need to talk with our finance director, but he is away on vacation. We'll be back there this week, is it?
It's not. The census program is its own program, and in fact, they would, if we're talking about switching to the other carrier, they would prefer the other carrier because it's very... They have to make special programs to work with our current billing software. And there's just a lot of glitches that occur when, when one side or the other seems to upgrade, there seems to be a lot of glitches. And it happens not only in Cadillac, but every place else that the census meter and the logos, New World, are used in combination, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the vehicle transceiver unit replacement.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support for that?
Support.
This would need to be unanimous, I believe. Marcus, could you... Any discussion about waiving or not? Hearing anything? Hearing nothing, rather? Marcus, could you give us a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried.
Then I'll make a motion to purchase one-vehicle transceiver unit and two handheld units to Aetna Supply of Grand Rapids, Michigan, for the sum of $65,000.
Support.
Of which money is coming out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Sorry, I wanted to add that.
Good. I support that.
Okay. Is that an accurate motion? Accurate?
Yes.
With regard to the Water and Sewer Fund?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And there's support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Petya, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Next up?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this next item is a discussion regarding consumer fireworks. It was brought up by a council member, I believe, at our last meeting about wanting to look at, talking about where things are at with the state now. I am happy to introduce, I believe, for the first time publicly, our new fire marshal, Anthony Wolfe. Did a great job putting together the communication and some background information. Fortunately, this is an example of an item where we had the information somewhat readily available, and we're able to turn it around pretty quickly, so it's not, not all too often that we can do that. But I am happy to introduce Fire Marshal Wolfe, who will, I think, go through the communication a little bit, talk about a couple of the concepts that he is suggesting with respect to whether or not council does choose to look forward, look forward to putting an ordinance together, what maybe a couple of the parameters should be. We do have in the packet tonight, the communication that does provide some of that, some of those details as well, so...
Okay, so you're going to step forward tonight and run through that?
I hope so.
Anthony, thanks for coming tonight. It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to have you onboard. What would you like us to know?
A few years ago, the state changed their laws regarding consumer fireworks and allowed them, you know, the aerial stuff, bottle rockets, mortars, that, the loud stuff. And with that came a lot of headaches for the municipalities, and most places opted to regulate fireworks through noise ordinances for complaints. Pretty much everything went back, fell back on locally adopted noise ordinances. But that stuff didn't hold up very well, and then the municipalities were starting to cry for some, some leverage. What can they do? And the state in June of this year decided to amend that law, and now gives the local municipalities some chance, or if they so choose to adopt a local ordinance, regulating with some restrictions, the times and dates that residents can deploy consumer-related fireworks. So, with that, before, we couldn't, as a city, we had no option to do anything with. Now, we can do, we're really in the driver's seat from, from a local standpoint. The only stipulation is the day before, the day of, and the day following a national holiday. We cannot regulate that. We do have an option for our, I looked into it, for our population, both locally and county-wide. We can go from a 1:00 a.m. to an 8:00 a.m., but on the day, that's on the day before, the day of, the day after. Any time outside of the holidays, it's really up to the municipality and what they choose to do.
One of the, just to add on to what Fire Marshal is advising, one of the interesting parts of the new legislation is that they separated, the state separated it out by population, those communities that could regulate the day before, the day of, and the day after several of the nationally recognized holidays, the timing in which municipalities can regulate fireworks. And so, there's, there's two, there's two categories. There's sort of the real big, the real big counties.
The above 50,000 in a city, above 750,000 in a county, and then the below that. So, when you're above, you can do 12:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. When you're below, like us, 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. on the holiday stipulation.
So, basically, what that means is that for the day before, the day out, and the day after, even if you wanted to regulate it, to have no more fireworks after midnight, you can't. You're stuck between 1:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. As you'll see in your communication, Fire Marshal Wolfe mentioned that perhaps we look at, if we're going to move forward with any kind of fireworks-specific regulations, limiting it from maybe nothing, you know, before 11:00 a.m. and nothing after 11:00 p.m. on all other days during the year, as, as a potential, you know, suggestion. Additionally, I think there was a suggestion about almost creating a real small fee schedule where you have, what is it, the maximum? Go ahead, why don't you?
I did, I talked, I tried to talk with a lot of folks on this. I spoke with Captain Norman, Manager Petya, Captain Woolfile, Lieutenant Detective Goldnik. I tried to cover, get everybody's perspective on this. The one thing that, we do have the ability to assess a fine for if this is violated, up to $500. As far as enforcement goes, it's going, you know, it'll be up to our law enforcement to, they're going to, they'll be the ones fielding these complaints, and what we discussed is maybe a proposed fee schedule. A first offense, it's X, you say, as an example. First offense is, first offense, $50. Second offense, $250. Third offense, $500. Or maybe we say, okay, this person is caught setting off fireworks on public property, on city property, do we just go ahead with a full-on $500 because it is in fact, public property and with all the different liabilities and stuff involved? So we have a lot of options on how we wanna do it. The one thing that was brought to me by Detective Goldnik was, it's always going to be law enforcement discretion as far as when they're dealing with folks regarding complaints. If we say, okay, first offense is a warning, then a second offense goes into, goes into fines, warnings aren't kept track of. So that really, you know, is it going to be, end up being a warning, and a warning, and a warning, and a warning? That's what, why we kinda decide, or thought that maybe it'd be good to assess a relatively low fee for the first time and then, cause then that will be tracked over time. So we'll know if it's a recurring issue there.
And again, you know, the purpose of this evening's discussion is to really just kinda throw out some general concepts or ideas. You know, if city council would like us, us being the staff, to move forward in developing some parameters for a new ordinance, we'd be happy to do so. If there are any, you know, ideas off the top of your heads that you'd like to offer tonight, that's great. You know, there, there isn't a, if you will, a real major timing issue. This is, I would say, the, the type of offense that, similar to smoking, is gonna be difficult if we ever enact a smoking ordinance or a smoking ban, would be very difficult to enforce. Frankly, you'd have to have, I think, either people willing to sign off on a complaint and/or the officers there at the time of the violation to be able to really issue any kind of actual citation. You know, a warning is a warning, but a citation is certainly something more than that. So I, I don't wanna lead anyone astray that this is gonna all of a sudden result in, you know, X amount of dollars in new revenue and, and a lot of compliance. This is gonna likely be a good opportunity, frankly, to get something official on the books, like what some other municipalities are doing. And then certainly there'd be some additional and new public information that's out there about what we're doing and, and we could certainly remind people when it does come time to holidays where people are typically blowing off fireworks, that you need to be cognizant of where they're doing it and the, and the hours in which they're permitted.
The other thing we, that came up is, I don't know how this would tie in, I have to speak with the attorney on it, but as far as we, like with the Freedom Festival, we observed basically the city celebrated, celebrated the Fourth of July on the sixth. Would it be something, okay, so we're, we're going to, as an example, regulate fireworks from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, any day. The holiday comes around, we're gonna do the 1:00 AM to 8:00 AM. No shoot times. Now, that would cover us on July 3rd, July 4th, July 5th. Are we going to extend times, like for this, what just happened on July 6th, to 1:00 AM, 8:00 AM? Do we write in special language, something like that to be conscious of, that we might not necessarily celebrate the holiday or observe the holiday when it actually occurs? So.
Anyone? You have any questions so far?
I don't know if, I guess one question, kinda in the, in this discussion, is, I did get some feedback, I don't know if any of you guys have had over the years, this is usually an annual where certain neighborhoods have the complaint come in. And, and in all honesty, it's, it's usually the same type of citizens. And I'm wondering if we're gonna wanna make sure we, if we go this direction, that we make sure we keep in mind, a lot of times it's people that have children that, and to be honest, it ends up being the same neighborhoods where it's this, it's not a one-time offense, it's a, we're having this all summer. And then also sometimes it's, it's senior citizens. So I don't know if we might, if we do look at this, if we might wanna look at that timeframe in sense of the fact of, you know, history shows that that's, that maybe the earlier time, other than 11:00 PM is where the complaints come in, if we might wanna consider that. Then the other thing I was thinking is, one of the people that emailed me this weekend sent a link with a, a community that had an ordinance already in effect and whether we'd wanna maybe get some ordinances instead of us maybe reinventing the entire thing is, is there thought of maybe pulling some ordinances from other communities and looking and seeing what we like from those and maybe developing one from those?
I tried to find some comparables. I talked to two different communities, similar, a little bit larger, one relatively close than the one, not sizable amount larger, but fair amount, both of which, what I'm finding, Lake City of Grand Rapids is an example, a lot of these communities are just outright banning fireworks, consumer fireworks being discharged aside of the state mandated, day before, day of, day after. And that's the same thing I, that's the same thing, that's what I ran into. So, I, and I, the thing I looked into also on a couple of those ordinance I pulled, trying to find, were they assessing fees, that kinda stuff? And I didn't find anything written in there. So, we have, we have the option, I mean, it's...
That was gonna be my question, whether or not we could, instead of having every other day from 11:00 to 11:00, whether we could just keep with the holiday days?
You can.
Okay.
Just keep, you mean those timeframes or just the, in general?
That, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, 365 days a year, to me is terrifying. Just saying. And, and I know my neighbors would feel the same way.
But that's what we have right now, basically.
Right. And that's, and that's what's, where the calls are coming from. So if we could, and these are just, you know, this isn't sparklers, these are just the big noisy things. Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor members of council. Just so that you all know, the recognized holidays by state statute include, where are they? Okay. Martin Luther King Junior Day, Washington's Birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day.
It's one a month.
And New Year's Day, sorry.
New Year.
Then we've got, somebody brought up the point about, for example, the fireworks when it's an organized community event. It seems like that would be something that we could say if somebody's permitting for that event.
That's in the state. That's in the state, yeah. By special event, by permit only, that, that stuff is still preserved.
Councilmember Stevens, are you suggesting, and I think maybe you're thinking that if we are having a community fireworks show of some sort, that that would also be an exemption for folks to be able to use their own consumer fireworks that day as well?
Actually, no, what I was, somebody brought up the question about if, like this year it was two days after the holiday was the Independence Day fireworks. And you just clarified that, that that, if it's a community event like that, it's, would be allowed outside those three days in the timeframe.
But it was in relation to also allowing consumers to do their own fireworks.
Yeah. I wasn't thinking that and, you know.
No, I'm just trying.
No, yeah.
I know in, in my neighbors this year, I'm usually not here over the Fourth of July, so this is interesting, but after the fireworks, the neighbors were all doing, several neighbors were shooting off their own fireworks. So they were also celebrating on that day, having participated in the community events, then coming home, doing their barbecues and blah, blah, blah. So...
You know what happens after the fireworks on downtown?
Fireworks in the neighborhood. Yeah. Yeah. It was, it was actually, I didn't mind it at all.
When would they, when would the consumers use their fireworks then, that are legal? By the way, it's amazing that government's done this, when other things are not legal, but...
They would do it around the holidays.
Or if they had their own special event that they wanted to have fireworks for, cause I know my family, had a family reunion in Wisconsin, will sometimes do a fireworks show that's not around a holiday. So if individuals could petition, if it isn't like a community event, if we could set it up where an individual could, or a group could petition to have a special, you know...
On their private property?
On their private property.
Not sure if we can approve that. You have to look into that.
And then there's firecrackers, there's fireworks, and there's fireworks.
That's probably, is that defined pretty good?
That's in the law though, the...
In the law? As far, the law, consumer fireworks, consumer fireworks, consumer fireworks. Like the stuff that we just had are all 1.4G, 1.3G, 1.4G, it's these fancy numbers that truthfully, you ask the pyrotechnicians what they actually mean, they really don't tell you. There's a difference between what we had for the Freedom Festival and then consumer fireworks. The stuff that was, we had for the Freedom Festival, not available. Then everything, think of the way it was several years ago before this consumer fireworks law was put into place. Now we are in between the big stuff and what we used to have, was kind of consumer fireworks. So it's kinda that in-between stuff.
Indiana.
Indiana, yeah.
And in looking at just some, some broad comment, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say perhaps council isn't comfortable looking at allowing the launching of consumer fireworks, which frankly is defined a lot by aerial, you know, fireworks that go up in the air. Of those fireworks on a year-round basis, but perhaps would like us to maybe limit that usage to the day before, the day of, and the day after a federal holiday. And then maybe we can also look at, at adding another day if there's a community-wide fireworks show happening, that that too would be an appropriate opportunity for folks if they wanted to launch them and, and come back with a couple of options. I mean, certainly feel free to give, give us more direction.
I would like to look at that, a sample of an ordinance that would reflect that.
Good.
I've had a number of complaints related to fireworks and I, I think that that would be a good idea for us to look at that. We live in a resort community where people also try to live and it's, it's melding the two of those during this busy summer season and it's really difficult at 10 or 11 o'clock at night when we're hearing lots of booms and, you know, the animals are affected by it, children are affected by it, people with post-traumatic stress are affected by it. I received a phone call from a member of the community who, you know, relates neighbors letting off a lot of fireworks really late at night, 2:00 in the morning after the bars close, having parties with fireworks. So, you know, that's really difficult when you're living in a neighborhood, I think. It affects other people and that's what we're really trying to curb here.
And that's gonna be a noise ordinance issue right off the bat before it even gets into the fireworks, my guess is.
One thing, if I may counsel, that we also discussed, that I think whether we went, say, an 11 o'clock to 11 o'clock, or 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock, or went with, just going with the holidays, I think something that we also need to look at is, what about the fallout of this stuff? Who, if you're setting off fireworks on the holidays, like you're supposed to, and now your neighbor's yard is full of all of this debris, this cardboard and paper and plastic and this huge mess, now say you're lighting off fire, who, who does that fall back on? I mean, can we protect, or can we kinda put some language into an ordinance? Also, say, setting off fireworks and fallout, my neighbor's roof catches on fire, heaven forbid, you know, or my, but this is all, I think viable stuff to, to discuss when, if we still choose, or if council still chooses to look at an ordinance. I mean, there's, instead of just saying, okay, we're going to allow fireworks, or, okay, we're going to allow fireworks on the holidays, what else? You know, we've got, I think we need to really, if we're going to move towards an ordinance, I think we really need to take our time and draw it out well.
I would echo, I would echo the same thing. And you wanna make sure that whatever you come up with, that you can enforce it. Otherwise, it doesn't work.
Agreed.
So I, I definitely think you'd need to talk to the police and see what's enforceable or what they can enforce, or what they feel they can enforce.
Can be a problem. I had several calls last year, none this year, but by the time they would get out there, they couldn't find where it came from and...
Small force.
Yeah.
Everybody has a recorded device on their phone that has a timestamp to it.
Well, what's really nice about this too is, kinda what Councilmember Spelman was saying is, then, then people can plan on it. They know, if they have families, they know that these three days, there could potentially be some and, and plan around it a little more. And then it's organized. And so that, that's a nice aspect. And I know it does put on our, on our police officers, there's a lot of time, this still may happen, but with the, a lot of them are noise ordinance complaints, this will hopefully prevent some of those and because there's an ordinance, that they won't be out doing that and that will hopefully allow them to spend other time on other issues instead of that.
I also think that most people, if there's a fireworks ordinance, it's easier to read, you know, if you're, I, I don't understand what's too loud with a noise ordinance all the time, you know, obviously because of my experience in college. But, but if there's an ordinance about times for fireworks, I think that makes it way more clear to folks and most people respect the law. So I think that could help with a lot of neighbors' complaints.
So it sounds like you're, first, thanks for what you're doing, but it sounds like you may have the, try to put some of that together as to what we're gonna put in ordinance? And do you think that we've given you clear, a pretty good idea?
Yes. I think, from my understanding, it sounds like the council would like to move toward just observing the holiday stuff, the, the state-regulated holidays, I think there's nine of them, and then also look at some of those protections. Now what about fees? Is that...
It'll all have to be worked out, but...
Okay.
I, I think we'll provide some...
I think we could go with a graduated fee schedule, but $50 is too low. It's gotta start higher than that. That's my opinion.
So for next council meeting, council would like to see sample ordinances from other municipalities in use or just some draft stuff?
Can you help clarify, cause one of, they did send a ordinance and it's probably a community that's in that larger population, that it sounds like they have different rules to it, but it would be nice to see, and it looks like with what we're going, there might be more of those ordinances like that.
With bans?
Just on the holidays, yeah.
We'll be happy to put something together.
Thank you.
Anthony, do you need any more direction from us tonight?
I have something for next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Nice to see you and again, welcome to our team. I'm hearing good things about you. All right.
Yes, thank you. I'm not entirely sure if there's anyone, yes, there is.
Made in Michigan?
Okay. Well, great. If, if Mr. Mayor, members of council, you could please come up and introduce yourself. I did mention earlier this evening, as we added the item, it's called Made in Michigan Thursdays. They like to start July 25th and using a parking lot immediately east of the city fountain, the first couple of rows. If you could give a little heads up on the event, that'd be great.
My name is Judy Evans. Thank you so much for having this meeting, so we could come here. And I am asking for permission for the city to let us use the city park, the parking lot right there by the city park between Toy Town area, closer, closer on the other side of Toy Town, to be able to use that in the mornings between 6:00 AM and 2:00 PM for a made-in-Michigan, grown-in-Michigan farmer's market. And be able to start that on Thursday, starting on the 25th of July. I would be, we'd like to do that as an, an upgrade to last year's event and we'd like to have a nice mix of products, food, and possibly some live music in the morning to help bring community members out to have a really good market to come and shop at.
Okay.
If I could just ask a clarifying, I just want a clarifying question.
Yeah.
The location of the lot, I was, I was told earlier today, it was gonna be the first couple of aisles, just adjacent to the fountain, you know, in the east, it would be, so I guess the west side of the lot?
Sure.
East of the fountain, west side of the lot, east of the fountain. Is that right or...
When I, when I spoke with Joy last week, we were, we went down and looked at it and I had not heard anything different. And what we had discussed actually is we are trying to bring more business to the businesses. So we thought it would be better to have the farmers and the vendors in that very first, first two rows after the, after the barrier, that's right there on the other side to the businesses. That way the people that come in would be closer to the businesses and hopefully bring more business on the other side of the market.
So closer to Mitchell Street?
Yes. Thank you.
I see one problem with that. The only handicap parking in that lot are there.
Okay. What about on the other side?
So if it was, if, if you did this, I would ask that those handicap spaces be kept open.
Sure.
Cause handicap isn't just closed, there's more space to get in and out.
Yes.
And that's actually the, the most important criteria.
Sure. That would not be a problem.
It would be just not to block any of the handy spots. There aren't that many downtown anyway.
Do you know if Joy has talked to the businesses around there to find out if that's gonna affect anything related to their... going to affect anything related to their parking?
I know that we've...
Businesses that aren't necessarily retail.
Sure. I know that we're leaving that one area open right next to the building, there's the, there's the...
Alley?
Alley, thank you, where you can park, and then we would, if we needed to, we could move it out closer to the park if that was an issue, but I know that the, Toy Town is good with that, and we've spoken with Willow Market as well.
So Elk Avenue is open, then?
Yes.
Okay. So it would be to the, it would be to the west of Elk Avenue.
Presumably...
Elk Avenue is where the handicap spots are, so that's good.
Presumably Joy has talked with the DCA membership, and...
Yes.
Those are most of the businesses right there?
Yes, she cannot be here today, she, tonight, she was at another meeting, but she spoke and got the first approval from the businesses before she set up to come here, to get approval from you.
Okay.
Question on the, more out of curiosity, the made in Michigan vendors, are these already selected, or this is something where people can, can make a request to be part of it, or how does that work?
Yes, definitely. Any, any person that lives, you know, we'd like them to be close to Wexford County, but we'd like the farmers, any crafters, we'd like artisan, we'd like to bring some really great vendors into our area. I actually work for a farmer, for a blueberry farmer, and I go to all the markets around the area, I'm in Gaylord and Interlochen, and they've got some wonderful markets going on through our state, and I would like to have that happen here, and bring some of those vendors that are already in with their crafts, and help them to make money, but also to have our community be able to get some nice items from local businesses and farmers.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I wish Joy would reconsider the location and go that area just east of the park, it just seems like it'd be a much nicer spot for all of you, and a lot more shady for those of you who are going to be sitting out there, nicer for the clients, but...
That, you know, that's, that's something that we will consider, and you're saying that it would just be nicer because it's closer to the park, because all the vendors would be on that side, and then they would be able to cross over. I don't see why that wouldn't be any issue. We were just thinking that, you know, bringing the guests and people that come to the market, they'd be that much closer to the businesses, and so maybe they would, you know, bring their business further into Cadillac. We'd like to bring that as well to help the businesses.
Of course, what they'd be doing is parking close.
Yeah, we discussed that as well.
They would be parking closer if the, if the booths were right next to the park, they'd actually be parking closer to the businesses.
And then when they're leaving, they'd see the businesses.
So where, where is, which aisles are they? I thought it's not going to be the ones right east of the...
No, it'd be the one right after Elk Avenue is what they're requesting.
But, but we could do, we could do it closer. I, we both liked both ideas, but we were just trying to figure out what would be the best, as far as to bring more business to our businesses.
Do you mind?
The local businesses.
Okay. Mr. Petcher, do you mind if we, sorry to interrupt you, just give them some latitude and work that out with staff as we move forward?
That's perfectly fine, as long as I've got council's blessing to close down a couple of aisles as...
The other question is, on this communication, it says 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and I'm hearing you request 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Yes, that gives the vendors time to move in and to move out after the market is open and closed.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the request for the Downtown Cadillac Association to allow the made in Michigan vendors to set up market from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Thursdays beginning July 25th through October in the city parking lot adjacent to the city park.
Support.
That allows staff some leeway?
Yep.
Okay. We have motion and support. Anybody wish to discuss that, or this item further? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Petcher, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Absolutely, yes. Good luck to you. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Petcha, I think that wraps you up, doesn't it?
It does, Mr. Mayor.
For about three seconds.
[laughing]
We're down to adoption of ordinances and resolutions, and back to city manager, you've got a, looks like, a request to adopt a resolution to approve the sale of water supply and wastewater system revenue refunding bonds, which I think is some housekeeping from something we did recently that saved us $700,000.
That is correct, and thank you, that is the number as well. Just to hear under $700,000. We did lock in a rate of 2.7%. According to our finance director, that equals a present value of $573,000 in savings over the next 13 years, which is, he said, about five to six times the benchmark for refunding transactions. So it's a great rate, and we're very excited for that savings through the refunding, or essentially through the refinancing of the debt that we have. This evening, we do have a motion that is needed to approve the sale of the Water Supply and Wastewater System Revenue Refunding Bond Series 2013 for your consideration.
Did you just... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Interrupted you.
I didn't say anything that time.
The $573,000 is what we're anticipating of a savings by the repurchasing these bonds?
The total, it says here, the total rate will equal savings of about $696,000 over the life of the bonds, which is a present value of $573,271 over the next 13 years, which is about 14.1%.
Okay.
That is excellent. This is, this needs to be out when we get one people that are issue-oriented on one item and try to look at our entire budget and focus on one thing, which usually is an expense. Hopefully, they'll focus on one thing like this, of the savings. It's great that the staff has done this, and I know we've done this in the past, but that's a big savings over time. And I think that everybody involved should give themselves a pat on the back, because especially with these tough budgets, this is humongous.
It is, and Mr. Roberts deserves credit. I want to thank the local newspaper, Cadillac News, did a nice article on Mr. Roberts' feet, and that's something that we've supported, and that's almost a million-dollar savings. It sure doesn't come along that often.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented, which would approve the sale of Water Supply and Wastewater System Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2013.
Okay. Is there support for that?
Or...
There is support. Any other discussion or accolades? Hearing none? Mr. Petcha?
Uh, thank you.
Definitely not Chris.
No. Councilmember shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. There are no reports of boards and commissions. We have a couple of minutes, actually minutes from back in November, December, January, February, March, April for the Cadillac Housing Commission, and the DDA and Business Improvement District had a meeting on May 29th. Their minutes are in there as well. And I think we're down to public comments with that. Anyone wishing to make a public comment at this time, certainly may. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes. Public comments are open, Harry. Be careful what I encourage for. I see no one coming forward. I do appreciate everyone coming tonight. We have no... I'm going to close public comment, then. We have no tabled items. Go to the order, and I'll start with Mr. Petcha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for coming this morning. I think we had a good exchange with the Clam Lake Township Board and the Clam Lake Township DDA. I recognize it has been a long day for all of us already this evening, albeit relatively short open session agenda yet, but just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Okay. Mr. Councilmember Melama?
Just one thing. We had issues and solutions over coffee this past week, and water rates with the township came up, and that was because of the article that our reporter had written, and it brought a lot of discussion, and also contracts. That was basically the discussion. It was a good discussion and a very frank discussion, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Melama. Councilmember Stevens, looks like you're next.
Just kind of going with Councilmember Melama said real quick is, I've heard quite a few comments, people surprised when they hear, of course, sometimes it gets thrown at the bad city and not working, but when people realize that for years that those township sewer agreements, the rates that they were paying is half the rate of the city, that did open up some eyes. I've heard the same thing. And again, thanks for you and staff doing those meetings. I still hear people say that it's easier to maybe go one-on-one like that than go to the council. They feel a little intimidated here. But secondly, I know Gabby's not here from the Visitors Bureau, but I'll tell you what, the festivals, festivities over the Fourth, but one thing I noticed, and we comment on this a lot, is the volunteers. Here is a holiday weekend, and some of them, so many to name, that are giving up their Friday and Saturday of a big holiday, donating their time to make those events work. And I know some of our own staff do it. You know, Al Dumont was down there, and sure enough, on Monday morning, he's right here first thing in the morning, because he's, you know, put in the whole weekend doing that. So even Sunday, but just some great activities. And one thing I noticed was those volunteers walking around in that heat and doing it all day, the sacrifice they give. It was such a success. I don't know if they've had one of those events with that many people during the day. The mayor probably, you know, you're around playing music on those a lot, but there are a lot of people involved this year for the activities, and that's just a sign of an excellent job by the Visitors Bureau and all the volunteers.
And our city staff as well. Did a wonderful job with that, increased inflow. How about Councilmember Spelman over there?
I'll just add to that, that what's nice is the consistency of having that event or that celebration every year now for the last few years, and it's gaining momentum. And, you know, that's how a tradition is made, and it's great to see that. I really appreciate the work that Joy and Gabby and others have put into it, and certainly what you said about the volunteers and the community, because that's what makes those big festivals. And thank you also to council and for staff for placing the fireworks discussion on the agenda and for your comments related to it. I think it is a really good first step, and I think we're headed in the right direction with putting together a local ordinance to control that. It's not only a noise issue, but it's also a safety issue, as the fire marshal pointed out. And I'd like to congratulate the county for celebrating their 100 years for the courthouse. It's really exciting, and I hope we all get a chance to go there on that day. I know our staff, my staff, will be there, and it's really exciting to take a look at the history of some of the departments in the courthouse and what they've done over the last 100 years in that building. It's kind of cool. I know we're going to have some really old extension stuff back in the days of the old homemakers and the egg agents. It'll be kind of fun.
Councilmember Shippers, you've been up early today with the rest of us.
Yeah, I get up early when I'm teaching school. That was like sleeping in, almost. Couple of things. First of all, I'm really happy to see that visually impaired, that the crosswalks have been in place, the crosswalk signals to assist visually impaired folks are set downtown and ready to go. I'm glad for that, for people that I know and love that can cross safely on the main street. I'd also like to encourage people, the other thing that's up and running is the bike sharing, the bike lending. The bicycles are over at Mitchell State Park, and they are free to borrow. If you would like to go on a bike ride on a lovely evening, you can go and sign one out, and it's not a rental, it's a free bike for you to go and take a bike ride. So I would encourage folks to go and take advantage of that. Yeah.
Don't mean to interrupt, just wanted to mention, please bring either a state ID or license and a credit card for the file.
Yep. So you just have to have some kind of identification in case you don't come back. Now, if you don't come back for some reasons, well, anyway, you know what I'm talking about. So use the bikes, and I hope to get a place in town, closer in the center of town, for people to ride from as well.
Any updates, by the way, on the shelter meeting? I see a couple of folks that were related to the...
Thanks for reminding me.
No problem.
We did have a meeting at the library last week. The Board of Commissioners meeting is on Wednesday, and we plan to go. There is a draft ordinance, and the draft ordinance actually is, it's designed to allow for a vendor to run the shelter. It's the way that it's worded, what the one that we were looking at, has, it's not just the sheriff, it's an elected official or designated person to be in charge of the shelter. So we liked that. One thing it was missing was the establishment of an oversight committee, and so we just rode up, we used old, the old ordinances, or whatever they were, that from years passed that had a committee in it, and we took language from that and left some of the stuff out that we didn't feel that kind of committee would need to do, and proposed that they add that amendment when they pass this. So our leader is going to be speaking, anyone else who would like to as well, but to ask them to please consider, that would be Crystal Johnson is going to be speaking, but that would be to consider establishing a long-term oversight committee instead of just the animal control recommendation committee or whatever. So that, I'll have more news after Wednesday, depending on what they do, and then we will be meeting. They're going to be, they've received some proposals for operation of the shelter, and those are open the end of this month. They'll be opened publicly, each one.
Are they sealed at this time?
They're still sealed.
I did have some questions on that, and should I direct citizens to you?
Certainly.
On behalf of the city, so we can work it all through you. I did get a call today about a concern, and I see a couple folks here tonight. We may wish to chat with them, or you may, if you wouldn't mind, as we go to our...
Yes, certainly.
Close session.
And people can email me, too, through the city, and I'll... But yeah, definitely, feel free. I don't know everything. I'm trying to keep abreast of it, but it's, we'll figure this out.
And you had a meeting this last week at the library?
Yep, last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
All righty. The Arts Festival is coming this weekend. Like to invite everyone to attend that. The Moose Club, the Moose is going to put on a senior citizens' luncheon Sunday, free, actually free for the entire community is their goal. Also, Jack and Joe Benson are unveiling and having a formal opening ceremony for the historic plaques that are along the walkway. That will be at 10 o'clock, and I'm coming back, I'm going to be there on Saturday morning. Thank you. So I'm inviting everyone to come down there. And I guess I was going to mention, there's been a lot of violence in our community lately, and I would ask people if they could consider pulling together and taking a second look at their behavior before more people get hurt. We've had some things happen that are uncalled for, and very not, not very much like Cadillac. I'm sorry to see these things going on, but just ask the general community to sort of police itself a little better with regard to violent behavior and taking a second look at what that does to our city's image and to our citizens and their families that are victimized. Right in our downtown, there's been two bad events tied into the bad judgment. Had one person died and another may, at least is critically injured at this point. As we're talking about safety and crazy fireworks and how those would ever be legal in the first place is beyond me, but that's all I have for this evening. Mr. Petcha, did you have a little bit more to add to your go-to-the-order besides thanking everyone for coming tonight?
I do. On our agenda, not on the one with the motions that are listed, I do have requests to go into closed session. The request, actually, it is on this one as well, but let me just go to my language that I have written here. The request would be to move to closed session for an update on pending litigation, William S. Burnett as mayor of the City of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn, and to discuss legal opinions of the city attorney.
Okay.
Not inviting anybody in. Just to clarify.
All right. Could we have a motion to retreat to closed session, then?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
And those further, are further reasons stated by Mr. Petcha?
Yes, sir.
And supported as well?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right. Okay. Mr. Petcha?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried off to closed session. Thanks for coming, everyone. We will be back at some point, but if you don't wait, thanks again for coming. Stay cool if you can. I get the extras. All right. We're back in the chambers here. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Spark.
Motion supporters made. Could we have a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We're back in open session. Anything to report from staff or council or...
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we will sign off at 9:20. Thanks for tuning in, everyone, and those that came, thank you very much for contributing tonight. Meeting adjourned.